I'd like to call the October 5, 2015 Planning Commission Meeting in order. Could you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I please have a roll call?
Commissioner Silverman.
Present.
Commissioner Marsters.
Present.
Commissioner Harper-Peterson is absent this evening. Parks Chair Bergman.
Present.
And Chair Gutierrez.
Present.
Public comment, public comment is limited to items not on the agenda. The Commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act. However, the Commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on a future Commission agenda for a more comprehensive action or report. Is there anyone to speak on any item that's not on the agenda? Is there anyone here to speak on any items that are not on the agenda? Okay. With that, moving to the public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry, for a little minutes. Everybody get a chance to take a look at the minutes? I didn't have any changes. No changes, anyone?
I move approval of the October 5, 2015 Planning Commission Minutes.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain, I was not here last time.
Public hearing, procedures for public hearing. Staff will present a report on the history, physical features, et cetera, on the application, followed with the staff's recommendations. The applicant will make a presentation. Thereafter, interested members of the community may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed and no further discussion from the floor can be held. The Commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice, the public notice or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Speakers should fill out a speaker form, phone by the door, and hand it to the Recording Secretary prior to addressing the Commission. The speaker should come up to the microphone to speak. Since the meeting is being recorded, this will assist staff in preparing the minutes. And I believe Item A is going to be continued, correct? To a date certain?
Yes, Chair Gutierrez, that is correct. The application for 545 Walnut with the applicant's request, they're requesting it be continued to a date certain, which would be November 2, which is the next Planning Commission meeting following this one. Should that be the pleasure of the Commission.
I move to continue 545 Walnut Street to November 2.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, the first item that we're going to be hearing, 1501 San Carlos Avenue, APN 050123010, consideration of requests for approval of design review, conditional use permit, significant tree removal permit, and tentative map. And we have a presentation from staff. Hi Jill.
Good evening Commissioners, my name is Jill Lewis and I'll present to you the mixed-use project at 1501 San Carlos Avenue. The Commission previously approved the project on the adjacent parcel outlined in red at 1525 San Carlos Avenue at the last meeting on October 5, 2015. The parcel outlined in yellow is the one we'll be discussing tonight. The two images above are the existing views from Chestnut Street and San Carlos Avenue. The subject 7,150 square foot site is zoned M-U-S-C, which stands for Mixed Use San Carlos Avenue, allowing up to 59 dwelling units per acre, and has a corresponding general plan land use designation of mixed-use medium-high density. The proposal before you is a new four-story mixed-use project. At the ground level, there is 625 square feet of commercial space. There's the residential lobby and also a parking garage. It has six condos on floors 2 through 4 and also provides landscaping and associated site improvements. This project requires design review approval, conditional use permit to reduce the 40-foot parking area setback, significant tree removal permit, and a tentative map approval for the condos. The front of the structure has the commercial space wrapping around to the side, its entry door at a 45-degree angle. There's architectural detailing but still maintains the clean look and simple feel of the style of architecture. Through a variety of projections, extensive use of balconies and recesses, the design of the structure is such that the stories are broken up into distinct pieces. This is demonstrated through the vertical relationship of the structure with a distinctive base, middle, and top, each separated by a subtle stucco trim. Each unit features balconies and decks providing required open space on the side and rear elevations. The rear elevation, often the neglected elevation, provides a great deal of visual interest. The use of recesses on the ground floor, a balcony element on the second floor, a trellis element on the third floor, all together provide a well-articulated elevation. This is the interior side elevation, which is adjacent to 1525 San Carlos Avenue. This elevation includes a moderate amount of recesses, trim, and windows. Where the neighboring building will be constructed, there is limited detailing for obvious reasons. The design of the structure is Santa Barbara-style architecture, which features simple, clean lines. The building exterior uses stucco painted snowbound, iron railings, trellises done in rookwood dark brown, and the storefront mulleons in dark bronze. There are decorative accents, trim, and awnings throughout. The roof will be done in clay tiles in the Newport blend color. Since the area counted toward meeting the 15% landscape requirement, contains more than 10% paving, the applicant had to propose an alternative landscape plan. The reasons that were provided to staff include: the provision of a large shade tree, Chinese elm, and a tree grate is proposed along San Carlos Avenue; the paving is integrated with the commercial entry; three, their upright planted containers proposed at the architectural columns to provide vertical landscape and accentuate the building's design; there's also vertical evergreen vine-covered trellises between the architectural columns to vertically lift the landscape and a variety of plant forms, colors, and textures to create a dynamic space; palms are provided in the space between the sidewalk and building to further, provide further vertical integration of landscape and accentuate architectural forms. The conditional use permit request is for locating the surface parking closer than 40 feet from the street-facing property line. There was an error in the staff report that it should have been the closest parking stall was at 15 feet, not the eight stated in the report. So, the requirement is to provide 40 feet, 40 feet away from street-facing property line, and the proposal is to provide 15 foot from the street-facing property line to the closest parking stall, all enclosed within a garage. Planning staff has determined that the trees proposed for removal substantially detract from the value of the property, and the required action is necessary to allow reasonable economic or other enjoyment of the property. So, there are 10 trees total on site, three significant trees to be removed, and the replanting is three trees on-site, one in a planter on the second floor rear balcony, and one street tree. A tentative map is required for the proposed condos. There are 10 associated findings that staff has made, and we believe you could support them all. In regards to outreach, a meeting was held at the Adult Community Center on February 23, 2015. The invitations were sent to property owners within a 300-foot radius of this project site. Seven people attended. Most expressed concerns related to parking and to the timing of construction, given the adjacent project at 1525 San Carlos Avenue. On October 8, 2015, the public notice was mailed to the property owners. In regards to the question regarding construction timing, this applicant stated that the construction of the project was anticipated to take 12 to 14 months. So, this is the formal motion. Our city attorney alerted me to edit to condition number six. Since the developer will not be providing any on-site affordable units, we would just add that into that condition.
I'm sorry, I don't understand. Six says they're going to pay an affordable housing impact fee. So, what's, what's, what needs to be changed?
Well, the way our ordinance reads is there's an election that a developer has. He can either provide the affordable units or pay the fee, so I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Okay, so it's being modified to say that prior to building permit issue, the applicant shall either provide an, or, or is it that the, because the...
They already have decided to do it.
Okay, so prior to building permit issuance, because the applicant has chosen not to provide affordable housing, they shall pay an affordable housing impact fee, okay?
Is there any other questions for staff right now? Is there anybody that wants to speak on these item, on this item? I don't have any public speaking cards here. Is there a presentation from anyone else? Okay. Okay. Well, with that, I guess there's, close the hearing, right?
Uh, yeah.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, who wants to start?
Well, I mean, there's not enough spaces, but it's consistent with the ordinance code. I mean, they, I mean, they need probably 12 spaces and they don't have them, because everyone who lives here is going to have two cars. But it's compliant with the ordinance code. I mean, I imagine will just require that they provide transit passes to their, discounted transit passes to their, to the people who purchased the property or something, although it's not rental, it's ownership, so I'm not exactly sure how we do that. Maybe we create some, ask them to create some sort of fund, to fund, you know, transit passes at 50% or something, you know, for at least 10 years, like that. I don't know, the city attorney isn't, doesn't seem terribly concerned.
Well, we've done that in prior applications, and I think I agree with the, the concept of a, of a limited term on, on such a program. But the question is, how much, and, I mean, there's some details that you might want to delegate to staff.
Okay, that sounds fair. And then, you know, there's no discussion of it, but I don't see why we wouldn't keep our, our normal construction hours limited Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, since we did that on the adjacent property, and the same dust mitigation requirements that we've done the last couple of projects. Those are, those are, and I would love to see more trees, but I'm not sure where they would go. But I'll leave that to Mr. Marsters, because if anyone can find, no, I can't joke about this anymore. That's all I have to say.
Just a general question too, on the impact fee, the affordable housing impact fee, what's the formula for that?
There is a formula that's provided within the resolution that adopted the city's affordable housing impact fee. It's kind of on a sliding scale based upon, I think, the square footage of the, of the average unit. I don't have, I don't, I couldn't tell you the formula off the top of my head, but it is something that is consistently applied to, to projects that are subject to it.
Okay. Do you want to start with landscaping?
Sure. So, I guess my first question for staff is, when did 15% landscaping become 5% landscaping? It seems to me like we've gone from requiring 15% landscaping to allowing 10% of that to be concrete. And so, we're now down to really 5% landscaping in any given project.
Within the zoning ordinance itself, it is correct that 15% of the site needs to be landscaping. And landscaping, as defined, does include some elements of hardscape. Our code goes further on to say that 10% of that 15% is a maximum for hardscape unless the applicant requests an alternative landscape plan. So, the code has that flexibility built into it, and it's through the design review process where the Commission can take a closer look at that.
But I don't remember seeing any plan that has so little landscaping for a project of this size, for anything that I've seen. So, I guess my question is, there's some way, even if we put in some sort of vertical landscaping, you know, vines going up the side, I just, I looked at this and I thought, there's just nothing, there's no green there, okay? You know, there's a tree, there's, there's three palm trees, and then there's a tree off to the right-hand side on San Carlos Avenue, and then a few bushes. And it, to me, it just seems like there's very little landscape, and I'm not even sure I could come up with a 5% that's there.
could come up with a 5% that's there. And I'm just -- maybe the landscape architect could come up and tell me where else they can put green.
Hi, I'm Tom Holloway with KLA, where the landscape architect's on the project. If you wouldn't mind, can we flip back to the architectural color elevation? So, one of the things that's not shown on the architectural rendering, but is in the plan or intended for the plan, is if you see, there's the colonnade in front of the retail, and then there's kind of the blank area that has the filled-in arches, and then it goes down to the driveway entrance. We've got trellis elements that go and fill those blank portions or those non-windowed portions of the wall. So, we do have vertical landscape that happens in there, between those two palm trees, exactly. And then, what's also not really articulated very well, because they're trying to show the architecture on here, is in front of the columns, the two, where you can see the containers, but you can't see the plants in them. So, we have vertical landscape that happens in those that lines up with the columns also. So, that's some more landscape, as well as it's just -- it's a little fuller and denser than what we're seeing on this elevation. Do you mind if we flip back to the landscape plan? Another thing that we could potentially do to increase the amount of landscape is at the corner of San Carlos and Chestnut, there's the Parkway Strip, and it's got utilities in it right now. So, because it's a relatively busy street, and with the pedestrian crossings and everything that happen in there, what we were looking at doing is taking that Parkway Strip and putting pavers in it, and then having some containers, again, to be able to lift the landscape. But, still, it winds up only being a couple of containers. What we might want to do is look at not putting those pavers in that space, but having more landscape in there, so that between the street and the building, we've got a little more landscape that happens.
Can you show that on the screen? Is there anyone that he can kind of pinpoint what he's referring to? Okay.
This kind of darker gray space that's right here, and then down here is what -- exactly. Thank you.
Can we make those more like the areas on the corner of Laurel and San Carlos, where they're actually -- they're raised up, and there's trees planted in there, or, you know, I'd feel a little bit better with something -- something more than pavers.
Yeah.
Is what I'm looking -- I keep seeing. And I'm just not happy with the amount of landscaping, and I'd love to see some more trees. I'm not saying anything. But, I mean, even if they're, you know, the Japanese maple trees that seem to be popular, I just -- that whole area is great. The other thing, you mentioned that there's sort of -- I see two little containers on either side of the retail that you said is going to be vertical going up.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Is there any chance that you could put additional containers in there, rather than just the two that are sitting there at the far ends of it? Because you really have an entrance at the corner there.
No, I think we could --
But, there's, you know, there's opportunities to put at least maybe two or three more containers in there, so you've got vertical along there.
I don't think we would have an issue at all putting containers in front of all of the columns, with the exception of, I think, the one in the corner.
Right. You want to be able to have easy access into the building. I don't have an issue with that.
The other thing that I think that we could be completely open to is switching the palms out and putting in some more vertical trees. I mean, we have a very limited amount of space, so we can't put large, spreading shade trees in that location. But, we can get vertical columnar-shaped trees that are going to cast a little more shadow across the sidewalk, and we just don't want it to interfere with the building, obviously.
I think I would be more comfortable with something like that than sort of a trunk with just a few leaves at the top. What you have to be careful there, and we learned -- we saw that at the project that's next door, is fire escapes. So, you've got to make sure that you're not blocking any of those balconies, because those are the access.
And that's where those palm trees are lined up right now, is between those.
Between those.
Yeah. So, we don't want to create something super dense in that location, so that -- but, having a broadleaf tree in that, I'm -- we're perfectly fine with that.
And what about the patio on the second floor? Is there -- is there a --
That has containers that line the edge, linear containers that are plus or minus 18-inch -- 2, 30 inches tall, that's continuous along that edge. So, from the street looking up, you'll see the greenery, and then in the corner, there is a small tree in a container. That would be something along the lines of a crepe myrtle or an Australian willow, something like that, that's more of a plus or minus, you know, 10-foot tree, not a big tree, because it's got to grow in a container.
Right, right. So, let me ask staff, how would we go about adding some of these things in, in particular? I think we can sort of talk about the containers easily enough, but the streetscape along the corner, and...
I think what I heard, Commissioner Marsters, is that there may be a discussion from the commission to require plant material in the locations around the utility boxes, and we can certainly coordinate with public works staff to see what options there may be to introduce landscaping in those areas, and maybe even possibly address some of those utility boxes, so that frees up some additional space.
Even especially if it's sort of raised, kind of like the corner of Laurel and San Carlos Avenue?
If you go to 1201 San Carlos Avenue in Google Map, you'll understand what he's saying.
Yeah, I'm familiar with it, right at the entrance of Laurel Street.
Yeah. I mean, this is a corner that is walked by a lot of people, and it's right across the street from the Adult Community Center. And so, I think doing a better job landscaping that corner would actually improve that whole area.
If you don't mind, do you mind if I --
Sure.
Okay. My only concern is to condition raised planters in that location. There's a lot of utilities in there.
I would leave that up to staff, but I would suggest that we try and do that, okay? Staff will make the decision about whether it can be done or not, but there may also be opportunities in there, and I would like to see trees, if possible. At least one on each side. Easily done, yeah. I mean, as far as a motion, all we need to do is require that additional -- as much foliage as can be put in those locations. Including at least one tree on each. To the extent feasible, as approved by city staff. And that was my big issue. Do you want to -- do we have a picture of the rear of the property?
A rendering?
A rendering of the rear? The only question I had about the back of the property is, I know they can't touch the two buildings, but does that leave enough room? Is the fire department okay with the space? I see you shaking your head. I assume that they would be, but, you know, how do they deal with that? Because in other places where there were multiple buildings close to it, they couldn't -- they had to leave like 18 inches or...
Yeah. Bob Sovichow, RYS Architects. It has to do with the egress exiting out of the building, and we have two stair towers, so we don't have any egress path along the property line. We did coordinate with 1525. They do have an exit path. So, on our lot line adjacent to them, towards the back of our property and theirs, the two buildings are at zero lot line, but in the front half of theirs, they're set back for their fire egress path.
So, is there any greenery here on the rear?
On the elevation you have in front of you, that's zero lot line at the ground floor, but set back on the upper floors, and that's where we have the raised planters that KLA was speaking about.
According to the -- according to our report, it's a six-inch setback in the rear.
Yeah, and that's to allow for architectural trim, finish. We do have the decorative features, those accents.
I'm just wondering, isn't -- I mean, it seems like this is kind of a solid wall. Am I mistaken? Isn't this where the house that is -- looks like it's an assisted living facility is on the back of this property?
Yes, the adjacent neighbor, yeah.
I mean, I think it would probably be nice for them if you could put some greenery, and it's a mean another way for you to add landscaping. Is there any reason why you can't do that?
We have introduced that at the second level, but at the ground floor, on the rear and the side facing 1525, those are zero lot lines. Well, we're set back six inches, but they're up against the property line.
I think what is being suggested is where it says "stucco TYP," you could potentially put climbing vines along there that could potentially be greenery in that area there.
Maybe I can let KLA speak to that. But, maintenance would be impossible without getting on to the neighbor's property, but...
Well, and that, and the plants would have to basically be planted on the neighbor's property, because with the foundation and everything on the building, with us being just really a few inches off of the property line, we don't have any earth on ours.
Oh, you could move -- you could move the building. I mean, I don't -- I mean, I'm happy to give you some room if you don't think you can do it with your six inches. I can -- you want five feet?
We can move out onto --
Landscaping, if you'd like, but it's a bad argument.
Yeah.
If you let us go out onto San Carlos Avenue, we'll just move -- keep moving down.
Can -- could we put a condition in that said -- that sort of asks you to work with the next-door neighbor? Because the next-door neighbor may be willing to plant something there on their property, because it would make their -- it would look nicer from their property. So, maybe that's something that you guys -- I don't know if you've talked to that neighbor, and are things...
I see everybody's looking at you. Caramon, please look over there.
Yeah, yeah.
The neighbor doesn't want it, what do we do?
No, no, no. I would just say, ask if the neighbor wanted it. And if the neighbor wanted it, then you could...
You put that in a condition that the work with the neighbor, the neighbor says no.
Exactly. If they don't want it, then I -- then you shouldn't put it there, okay? I was just thinking of some way to make it a little nicer, because we've done that in the past, where neighbors have come in and said, "There's this big, huge wall next to me." And we've said, "Well, let's put, you know, vines next to it, so that it makes it look nicer."
We've done that, too. We work with the neighbors and give them vines or trees, so.
Yeah.
We're used to doing that. We just want to be able, if the neighbor says no...
If the neighbor says no, absolutely, a condition that says, if the neighbor says no, okay.
And I would like to add, if I can, that we have made an attempt to soften that with landscaping, but it's at the second level, where we've got the plant material on the second level.
And these arches here, are they sort of filled in like the one that we saw on the front? And are they -- how deep are they filled in? Are they -- so, they're just a couple of inches?
It's more of an architectural recess to get a shadow line, so it's not a blank wall.
And that might be another opportunity for a single-level vines or something.
Yeah, I mean, we could basically -- sorry, we could just infill those arches with vines, and if they're maintained within those, it would look really cool.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Technical talk, really cool.
Good.
I didn't have -- I mean, you hit all the points.
Evan? So, motion time?
Motion time.
Oh.
She spoke with Landmark Development. You said the working hours, you want to go Monday through Friday, 8 to 5?
Yep.
I like to just offer -- I understand during the concrete and the framing and getting the exterior all wrapped up, I understand where you're coming from, but when we're working later on in the build -- we're trying to finish inside the building, I like to have some leeway to work, to finish the inside of the building, and have the workers park inside the garage. So, we -- again, you asked, staff asked how long it would take. Well, if we can't work on Saturdays, it's going to take longer.
So, you're asking to be able to work doing internal finishing on Saturdays?
Yes, sir.
From 8 to 5?
No, 8 to 1.
Okay. Can we do it a little bit later, make it 9 to 2? And the reason --
It's fine.
The reason being is, there are some people who like to sleep past 8 o'clock on Saturdays.
A lot of cities have 9 to 2, so I agree.
So, I'm just thinking.
All right, thank you.
And do you have any issues with us requiring the EU fund some transit passes for your...
As long as it's capped, we need to come up with a -- work with staff.
Add by?
I mean, amount of money that, you know, how many years, and how much is that going to be? I mean, it's an open book when you...
So, rather than the condos being 1.2 million, they can be 1.21 million?
I think if I'm asked staff about the TDM, I thought that was one of the items in your TDM about providing passes, if I'm correct?
Yes, that is correct. Within the city's Transportation Demand Management Ordinance, one of the options or strategies could be to offer transit passes.
So, how does 50% transit passes for 10 years sound? Does that sound reasonable?
Up here, it sounds reasonable, but without doing the math, I don't know. But, I agree with the work with staff to see if we can do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Motion time.
Well, I mean, how do you want me to deal? I don't know, working with staff, I mean, I'm -- they can work with staff.
I'm pretty sure staff's going to want some direction on that TDM.
I mean, I think 10 years, 50%, we're talking about what? I mean... And you offer it, you don't necessarily have to... Yeah. If nobody uses the train, then... They're not going to pay 50% not to use them. Right. So, I mean, it's 10 transit passes a year for 10 years, so 100 transit passes. I mean, it's nothing. Say $120 a month, so $120. Well, that's what I'm here to do, is sound reasonable. Yeah. Yeah, I'm okay with that. Okay, can I have the motion?
Through the chair, just one suggestion on how you might want to accomplish that goal, is you could have it part of the CCNRs, so that the -- it's -- the developer deposits the money at the beginning, and then it's just there, instead of -- because the developer, once they complete this project, they're not going to be there, but you want to...
I was just going to say, I mean, the way I was planning on phrasing the motion was create a fund that was sufficient, that was deemed sufficient by staff to fund 50% transit passes for 10 years for the residents of the building.
The owners of the building?
All right. So, I move that the Planning Commission grant approval of the request for design review, conditional use permit, significant tree removal permit, and tentative map at 1501 San Carlos Avenue, APN 050-123-010, with the following additions: that constructions hours are limited to Monday through Friday from 8 to 5, with the addition of Saturday 9 to 2, which can be used solely for internal finishing work. That's the Saturday part. Our standard dust mitigation condition, a condition that the... part. Our standard dust mitigation condition, um, a condition that the developer work with city staff to come up with additional landscaping on the corner of, uh, San Carlos Avenue where the, um, utility boxes are, providing as much additional landscaping as feasible, as well as a tree, if feasible. Um, in addition, that the developer, um, provide landscaping at the rear of the property, uh, either trees or vines if, uh, the, uh, the neighbor to the rear agrees, um, to the extent feasible, um, and include a, a fund necessary to maintain, uh, those, uh, that foliage. And finally, to, uh, offer, um, via a, a fund, uh, to fund transit passes, uh, at a 50% amount, uh, for, uh, 10 years, uh, as, you know, as negotiated with staff.
I think we also said we wanted to say, um, planters at all but one of the columns.
Yeah.
Oh, and in addition, that, uh, there be additional planters, uh, at the columns at the front of the building? Is it the front?
Yeah.
At, at the front of the building?
Well, it's around the retail.
Around the retail area.
No, no, yeah. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving to the next item, item C, consideration of amendments to the San Carlos zoning ordinance, Title 18 of the San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 18.22, signs consistent, consisting of corrections, clarifications, and minor improvements.
It's fine. I can get it where it goes.
Okay. Good evening, Chair Gutierrez and Commissioners. My name is Lisa Porres, Principal Planner for the City of San Carlos, and I will be presenting this item to you this evening. The item before you is a proposed amendment to the city's sign regulations, which are located in Chapter 18.22 of the city's zoning ordinance. As for all amendments to the city's zoning ordinance, the Planning Commission is required to conduct a public hearing and make a recommendation on the amendments to the city council. A draft resolution is provided in your pocket as attachment number one to the staff report. As discussed in the staff report, other updates or amendments to the zoning ordinance were discussed last year in 2014 and were adopted earlier this year. However, no adjustments were made to the sign regulations. Consistent with general plan policies to amend the sign ordinance as needed, staff is proposing modifications to correct outdated terms, replace outdated zoning classifications, provide some clarity, make some improvements concerning sign programs, directional and construction signage, digital signage for gasoline prices, and to address the issue of damaged or vandalized signs. A summary of the proposed modifications in table format is included in your staff report, but I'd just like to take a moment to go over, um, a general overview of what's changing. First of all, we want to remove outdated terms in the signed ordinance that refers to review by the city's Architectural Review Committee, the ARC. This committee, um, no longer exists, and signs are either permitted administratively by staff or are referred to the Planning Commission for review. We also wanted to, um, provide some clarification with respect to sign programs in the ordinance that refers to multi-tenant projects, being the only type of projects where a sign program may be initiated, initiated. However, on larger projects, we may want to see sign programs as well, so we added that in there. Um, we wanted to clarify that altered signs, sometimes when the sign face is changed, that can also trigger review by the city. We also wanted to provide some, um, better clarity on the review authority to approve, approve sign permits, and we modified that to be similar to what is, how it's outlined and regulated as part of design review. In terms of improvements to the regulations, we wanted to, um, add some flexibility to allow slightly larger directional signage, uh, for large sites. This particularly came up for a new project in the city, which, um, the commission may be familiar with it, which is Lingso. As you imagine, with their operations, they need, um, a type of directional signage that's larger than what our code currently permits, so it provides some increase in that, but for sites that are, that meet a certain size threshold. So you'll see that in the code. Uh, we wanted to grant, um, the ability to have more than one construction sign. As you might imagine, for large projects like Transit Village or Wheeler, where there's only a provision for one construction sign, we felt, um, we wanted to allow, um, more construction signs at the discretion of the director. Uh, we wanted to, um, provide, um, some improvement in our code with respect to, um, digital signs, but that they be only allowed for gasoline prices. Um, in our code, it really requires some level of interpretation. It's not very clear on the matter, so we've had had several inquiries about having digital signage for the ease of changing just the gasoline prices only. So you'll see that in the code. And then, um, the other improvement is we wanted to add some new regulations so that we have some ability to address signs that are either vandalized or damaged and require that they be restored or replaced and not left in a state, you know, of disrepair. So there's some new language in the code on that. Um, a couple more items before I wrap up is to, we want to replace outdated zoning classifications. So in the sign regulations, there were references to pre-2011 zoning classification, so those have been, um, replaced with the newer version. Um, and then, in one section of the ordinance, it wasn't very clear on where you actually find the regulations that limit the number, uh, the number of signs and the sizes of signs. So we made that, um, very clear, uh, where to find that. In order to amend the zoning ordinance, um, the commi, commission would have to make two findings. One is that the amendments are consistent with the general plan, and that the ordinance is consistent with a purpose of zoning, which is to promote the growth of the city in orderly manner and to promote and protect the public health, safety, peace, comfort, and general welfare. And the basis of these findings are provided in, uh, the attached draft resolution. This is the recommendation the commission would make, should you choose to make it. Um, this concludes the presentation, and if I am available, if there are any questions. Thank you.
Is there any current questions for staff?
Why don't we, why don't we let?
Okay, we have a speaker card. Nancy Oliver.
I'm Nancy Oliver. I live at 147 Belvedere Avenue, San Carlos, and I'm actually with the San Carlos Heritage Association. And I came because I wasn't sure exactly what you were going to, to report because I hadn't seen the whole report, because I'm concerned about the historic signs in San Carlos, and most especially, you probably know, the Carlos Club. It's just been.
About that.
A horrendous problem. I'm so sorry that someone who owns that building seems not to care about the history of San Carlos. So actually, from what I'm reading or seeing in your presentation, I'm very happy that historic signs will require review. It's just so important to keep remembering our history, and things get changed all the time, and things get torn down, and things get moved, but we do have some wonderful examples of things like the Carlos Club, which is a fabulous Art Deco sign and building, actually. It's a wonderful building. And so I just wanted to remind you that in this inquiry survey, there's several pages that refer to the Carlos Club and its fabulous sign, and if you have never seen it, ask the city because you want to read it. It's really important, and I think you've probably seen references to it before. Um, I also wanted to just say that, um, I see that there's no changes in the 18.22.120 list. Is that correct, Ms. Porres? Ms. Porres? It doesn't look like there's any changes. There's no red.
There's just a change in wording from, I think it's I to.
I.
From administrative to design review, because we no longer have an administrative.
Okay. So that's a, is that like an additional review, an additional to administrative?
They cleaned up some of the language. It was old language. Some of the, some of the process no longer exists, so, uh, it's more current language, basically, but nothing, nothing in addition.
No, and I, I was very happy to see that, and I thought, I, I think you're probably aware that some while ago, when the sign ordinance was changed, there were several properties here that had larger or more interesting signs grandfathered in to be able to stay. And I believe, besides the Carlos Club, I think the Lighthouse sign, which is another Art Deco sign, and also the Big Horse that's on Olson Nolte's building, because they're so well-known for San Carlos, and so they were allowed to stay. And I'm just hoping that, you know, those signs, including the Carlos Club, are allowed to stay and shine and advertise our beautiful community. So I just wanted to say that. And, um, if anything's vandalized, it should have to be restored to its previous condition. And this, that hasn't quite happened yet with the Carlos Club.
And that's what this ordinance does.
Yes.
I mean, it says damaged or dilapidated signs. Any damaged or dilapidated sign from any cause must be repaired and restored by the sign owner or responsible party.
So my question is, once this ordinance is passed, if that's still in it, would that therefore apply to that sign too?
Well, I, I, it would apply to that sign and any other sign, whether historic or not, um, in the city that includes, uh, that becomes dilapidated, faded, or letters fall off, or, or, um, anything of that. That's what it's intended to address, so, um, it would include the historic signs in the city as well as other signs.
So then the question is, I'm going to ask you, probably because you're probably the authority, because it hasn't been restored yet, even though there's been some discussion with him and, and the city and everything about it, would he then now be required to restore it, or would we have to come forth and ask that it be done?
I think this, um, with, with all respect to your question, I think, um, I have to look at each one of those cases on a case-by-case basis, so, um, it is possible that it would come about that way, but, um, I would rather not comment on any, on any specific, um, action that we might need to take under this ordinance.
So if it doesn't happen for a while, you may be hearing from us. That's what I'm saying. So that's really what I wanted to say. I didn't say pro or con because I hadn't read the whole thing, but it looks like a wonderful thing to me to be able to, um, regulate the signs, and particularly the ones I love. So that's wonderful. Thank you. Can I just say one thing? It has nothing to do with this. I wanted to thank you for bringing up the trees and especially the palm trees. I am so tired of seeing palm trees in Northern California's urban landscape, I could scream. So I hope they do replace them. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I, actually, I kind of aligned with that question. So it's a, on the, let's see, that's, section R in the damaged or dilapidated signs, it's, it's pretty much, it's a like-for-like, right? It's not, like, the other issues don't pop up, like you're repairing a sign and now you have to conform to the new guy. It's, it's a like-for-like kind of grandfathering, this is what it looked like. It just needs to be repaired the way that it originally looked like. Is that correct?
That, that's one possible result of the, of the sign review that would be required by that section, but it could be that, um, a sign might be outdated for the business and they want to replace the sign, uh, secure the dilapidated sign by putting a new sign, and I mean, that's a possibility too.
But it requires a sign permit, so basically.
But I will say, I will say, just because I just caught on to that, um, the, the historic signs section that talks about historic signs is untouched by this.
Yeah.
So if a sign has been designated historic sign, it's going to be treated like a historic sign.
So up, up above where, on P where it says vandalized signs, um, there's a choice of, you know, repair, restore, or remove. That does not apply to the historic signs because the historic signs that says repair, maintenance, historic signs will, shall be maintained and in good repair. Is that correct?
That's right. This, the historic signs, there's a whole section on historic signs that's not being changed tonight.
Thank you.
And there was just one last question. Give me an example that G types of review under, uh, C types of review. Uh, letter G, the, the director may refer design review directly to the Planning Commission when his or her opinion, when, in his or her opinion, the public interest would be better served by having the Planning Commission conduct a design review. I think this has happened before, but I, can you give me an example where that might come about?
Certainly. There could be signage located on a particular building that may be located within one of the cities. I think there are three or four gateway areas where maybe a higher level of design review may be warranted based upon geography. Um, it could be maybe even, um, a proposal to add a minor sign on a historic building where we would want to, you know, elevate that to the commission. And in some cases, um, there could be certain monument sizes, monument signs that are larger, you know, five feet, six feet tall in certain locations, and because of visibility factors, um, we would want that to come to the commission. So there's, um, a variety of different reasons, but there wasn't a provision to add that level. It, it's similar to the way the design review section code reads, where we have that flexibility, and, you know, there's been cases where we, we've used that, you know, because we do feel that the interest of the public is better served when it's elevated based upon unique characteristics or the geography.
Any other questions?
I have, I have one about signs on umbrellas.
On umbrellas or awnings?
Umbrellas. So, under the zoning code, um, section 18.23.140, um, then it goes D, 3, I, 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 and it says, umbrellas and awnings shall be a solid color canvas. Sunscreens shall be a durable fabric and retractable. No generic advertising or signage is permitted. Yet I know we have multiple places in the downtown where the umbrellas have, um, signage on them. And so I'm curious why that's not included in sort of the signing ordinance. This is a different chapter?
I think you're, you just referenced the outdoor dining section, right? So typically, if, um, the signage is located on an awning that is connected to the building, we treat that as signage. If it's signage related to, you know, the business, the logo, the name, um, it counts towards their air, maximum area for signage. So your question has to do with standalone umbrellas. Um, and I, I'll have to look at that section.
Let alone that the umbrellas are there 24 hours a day and are stored in the public right-of-way, which is illegal, and none of the umbrellas are seven feet tall, and you need to keep a minimum of seven-foot clearance. Um, there's also signage on those umbrellas.
Do you have a specific example of this?
Starbucks.
Yeah, so I mean, certainly if there, if the issue of umbrella is outside of the permitted clearance area, if it's not meeting the height, or it's, you know.
It's not a single umbrella in the downtown that's seven feet.
Yeah, that's a matter of, um, of, you know, basically code enforcement, and I know that's something that we continue to work on, and we, you know, we, we go out and we notify, um, the merchants, the restaurateurs about the city's regulations, um, you know, regularly. Um, I know it continues to be an issue. But as far, as, with respect to signage, um, I have to take a look at the, the section of the code. I don't believe it, it regulates signs, um, on the umbrellas. But from a signage perspective, that would be something that we would want to take a look at because it contributes to the signage for the property.
Sorry.
So.
Yeah, I was just going to say that, and, you know, without getting into details of any particular property, it's possible that if there's a sign on an umbrella, that it would be considered a temporary sign. It could be considered a permanent sign if it's always out there, and it should count against the total signage allowed at the, at the property.
Okay.
That's it for me?
That's it for me.
Shannon, anything?
I move that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution recommending the city council adopt an ordinance to amend Title 18 zoning of the San Carlos Municipal Code, Section 18.22, signs based on the findings incorporated in the resolution for the recent statements in the staff report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are you doing commercials now?
Yeah.
All right, moving along. Reports, correspondence, and general information, report on recent city council actions.
I have none, no news for the commission this evening, thank you.
So Planning Commission comments or reports? Nothing, no one, okay, correspondence, nothing. Planning staff comments, reports, and updates of current projects.
On November 2nd, we will be returning to the commission with the 545 Walnut Project, and we will be returning to the commission, not returning to the commission, but we will be bringing forward a sign program for the OSH site located on Industrial. That is another project that will be coming forward for your review. And not on the second, but in the near future, another mixed-use project at 520 El Camino Real, which is located right next to the Shell gas station on Holly and El Camino Real, across from the approved Transit Village project.
Oh, wait, did you say, which Shell station, the one by Holly?
Holly and El Camino Real. There's a vacant property just to the south of that site.
So when the OSH comes forward, it's just the sign?
The sign program, correct, yeah.
Sign program. We won't see the rest of it?
Not at this time, it's just the sign program, yeah.
That's it, ending our journey.